Senator.
Sherman. How about you, Sherman? How about you, Sherman?
I'm Sherman. And then I'll have you, and I'll have you open up the email. But I'll get on that, I'll get on that. Go ahead, begin. My point of view is to the life of the United States of America. And to the Republic where we live stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're going to roll call. Mr. Roseman.
Yep.
Mr. Ferris. Mr. Robertson. This is Hopkins.
Here.
And this is James. We are all here.
I see you doing it, right?
Yeah.
I will not obtain motion to approve the agenda.
I will.
Second. Motion by Robertson, supported by Roseman. If we attend any discussion. Here and now, all those in favor say aye. Aye, close the votes, same sign. That's five zero. Moving on, have you had a look over minutes from June?
Yep.
I will not obtain motion to approve the minutes from the January meeting.
To approve the eight minutes, isn't that?
All right. Motion by Robertson, supported by Ferris. To approve the minutes from the January meeting, any discussion? Here and now, all those in favor would say aye. Aye, close the votes, same sign. Five zero. Any comments I actually have to receive?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say thank you to all you guys who went into the workshop last month. And, um, I thought it was the best little workshop, and I appreciate all your efforts.
Any others? What else?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Moving on to communicate with the correspondents. Has anybody received anything other than the survey that they're involved in? Or you may not have received it, but certainly not. Anything else? All right. Perfect. Moving on to the whole business. Um, we did have, uh, at the State Open Workshop, we had a bunch of business members, um, put in a committee, um, come do our little, our little, uh, chindage. Um, we had the whole board. Um, we had two, um, business owners, we had representatives of the business. Several of us have business interests that were sitting at the table, so, um, we ended up just about, what, eight thirty, four to nine somewhere near final call tonight, had a very good discussion. Did a, uh, strengths or SWOT analysis with, um, so we did one of those kind of weekly. Um, when we first started, we actually had some more input. Um, I know, I bet his hand was rammed enough because he was doing a lot of writing. He was, he was taking notes like crazy. Um, I was dismayed that we didn't have more people, um, taking up on the invitation. Had a few people who said, yeah, we'll be there, we'll be there, we'll be there, that didn't show up, but that's what. Um, we are looking at scheduling dates for the public open houses, um, and what those are gonna look like. And I think we're gonna discuss that a little bit more later today. So, that is discussion on the workshop. Moving on to new business, for review, the survey that Jeff sent us, based on, um, several plans that we talked about in the workshop. Um, I had a chance to go through it, and there are, we, we had some notes for him. Um, he is not able to join us this evening, he's at the planning commission meeting in St. John's, I think he said. So, can't always happen, but, um, we do. Um, there are some, call them hot wet meadows, coming up in the world, um, agritourism, you know, farm markets and things, you know. Lewis's and heritage and all of there. Um, and then, uh, you know, wine farms and venues and, you know, wedding venues and things of that nature. Which is the next one, number five, there, um, new event halls and venues, um, plans for business growth. And this is what's going to go to the, um, disseminate to the general public for their input.
This year?
This year. This is, this is the general public online. It will be online primarily. We will have provision for having printed versions available, um, we still need to work that out exactly. Um, you know, we have several residents in township that want to give us their input, but don't do the internet. So, we're working on a provision for that. Um, Jeff did tell us that there is, this is done through one of their, through one of their vendors. Um, it's called Survey Monkey. It's been shut down every time a little bit. Um, but it does not allow the same device to input multiple ones. So, if you go through it on your phone, and you try to take it again, it'll say, hey, you've already used the survey. It won't let you do it again, so that cuts down on, um, on, it cuts, it cuts down on, you know, data farming, basically. Where people just try and throw it all in one direction. And they have, and Survey Monkey does have an algorithm that if the responses come in, you know, in a short amount of time, you know, that they're all, and they're all very similar, it'll flag it. Um, especially like where there's text, text boxes, if the text is copied and pasted, it knows, and it will flag it. So, I mean, it's, it's quite.
You're giving one person, don't know forty-four.
More than likely, yeah. So, that's why we have to have a paper version to go through, because you can't have a workstation here where people can do it here. Because it won't let you do it multiple times. So, um, there's, you can see, there's, um, talk of housing, um, the agritourism. We did have a discussion about omitting, um, discussion on marijuana. We had our, we had, we had our discussion on marijuana, we had our vote on it, we don't need any more information on it. Um, it's, uh, we don't need to open up that one again. Um, broadband internet infrastructure, we probably could remove that because we have, so there's a lot of expansion happening already that we didn't have to really be involved in, um, but we're gonna be.
Yeah.
Um, there's talking of, uh, of wind farms, like utility scale, like, um, light winds. Um, getting people's information on that, same thing with solar energy. Um, I actually spoke with, um, someone at Great Lakes about their community solar, um, thing. They have a farm, a solar farm up toward Gaylord, and they have another one that they tapped into, I can't remember where it's at. But for ten dollars per panel, basically, you rent your husband, fund the project, you rent the panel, and you get a credit of, you get a portion of whatever that particular panel produces in a year, off of your credit. Um, so it can be up to eighty dollars a year, so, it's not a lot, but it's better than nothing.
Seven hundred dollars a year.
Exactly. But if, and it's a whole lot cheaper and easier than, please stop kicking my ass. It's a whole lot cheaper and easier than calling, um, our home and having them come and put it in, because it's expensive with that one. You pay monthly for it, it's like mortgage, and you never, almost never get back what you paid.
Is that what you sell, or you give permits for, is that thing thing?
No, we're all residential.
Oh. This, this is a non-residential commercial?
This, the, in here it's utility.
Okay, okay.
So, like, yeah, having seventy, eighty acres for solar panels.
Would we regulate the sort of residential in Arizona for it, though?
Uh, we have, we currently, um, we have both the solar ordinance, or, uh, I should say article, in our zoning on solar, and we have one on wind. Um, they probably should be updated, certainly the wind, um, because wind requires a special use permit, even if it's a small residential unit. And I don't know that I agree with that, and that's something we can discuss as we go through this process. Um, solar does not require a permit for residential installations.
Doesn't matter if it's rooftop or ground up?
Nope, nope, does not require a permit. Um, the, uh, the only thing that requires a permit, and again, it's a special use permit, is if it's a commercial solar farm. So, um, and that was done actually relatively recently, that was done in twenty seventeen. Uh, because we had interest in a couple of properties at the west end of the township, uh, for solar farms actually. And, um, the problem being that we don't have direct access in the township to the main transmission lines. And so, that's why they, why they cleared it. Um, but, um, we actually do have ordinances on both. Not to say that it's not a bad thing to talk about, right? Yes.
Townships are most strict. Other cities have it, towns, like, the state of Ohio, the towns are the worst for solar.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have actually a permit and a check sitting in my mailbox right now that I'll, that was a solar home at Town Market. And, and every time they sell one in the township, they send me an application and a check, and I call them and tell them we don't require one for this, and send it back, and, you know, two months later, I get another one.
Um, then it moves on to, um, considering the preservation of our rivers and lakes and waterways. Um, I mean, the, so far, everything I've noticed, all of the options are be, you know, very liberal about it, be, you know, moderate, be conservative, or give your own, so, you know, do whatever, develop all you want, pollute, you know, don't give a hoot, pollute. Um, or, you know, walk that fine line between not infringing on what people want to do on their private property that they think they can do everything on, and protect the waterways, or be the most restrictive and allow very little development, you know, whatever's there, is there, you know, more. So, it is, that's on all of us.
Yeah, I can, I can.
Give it a second. Well, we don't have really a whole lot of room left for development on rivers and the river more than say the lake, so, yeah.
We, Mike, we probably do if we, if we loosen up our, our zoning. I mean, right now, we have twenty-foot setbacks on, on the lakes as well as the river. Um.
Used to be more than that, now it's fifty.
No, that's, that's
No, that's your side.
That's to the rear, I'm talking about to the side.
Yeah.
Because that's what, that's what
That's what limits you, you're saying.
Your density, exactly. Um, we do have an out that I've used, um, maybe a different administrator may not, but we have an out that says, in our zoning, it says, you can have the same non-performance as sixty-six percent of your neighboring properties within four hundred feet. So, use that to help people get bigger homes and stuff onto their lots, because we have so many non-performing lots. But we could actually just drop it down to eight foot.
Right.
And while, you're right, Mike, there's a lot of areas, you know, Logan Flaming, you can't put anything more in there. Um, but we have some other stretches around the lake that you, if you did narrow it down, that you could, the same thing, we require a hundred and fifty feet of road drainage for every lot. What if you dropped that down to, uh, fifty or sixty-five feet? I'm not saying that we should, I'm just saying, you could do these.
But I mean, the way it stands right now, we don't have a whole lot of development.
Right, exactly.
On the lakes. With, with our zoning the way it is.
Absolutely, absolutely, you know, so, um, yeah, you know, um.
And I think the White River Authority Board really restricts the worst ways.
Way, way worse.
Way worse than what?
The, the White River Board kind of kind of got like an evident pull, Mike, but, uh, when certain people have been on there, it was more tolerant. And more things got done, like that, down at Ecklerbrook's place here.
Yeah.
Went through, just, it breezed, no problem at all. You had a couple people change, and, you know, the, the last folks here, um.
They had the one stone in Greenwood.
Yeah.
They got it all hung up.
Yeah, um, but the, the one folks here by, um, oh, you know, when you come in the Little Road by, uh, Bobby Ramsey's house?
Yeah, they did.
They, they just shut them down so hard, it was brutal. It was really pretty brutal.
I was there, and
Yeah, it wasn't that brutal, I mean, they, they were very, very unprepared.
They felt it would be a
Yeah, it, they could've they could've done it differently, but it was, um, that is a problem. That's only, and actually, it's only a problem if you're within eighty feet of the river. If you're back more than eighty feet off the river, then you're, you're screwed, so you don't have to go through that.
Yeah, they're eight feet off.
So, yeah.
If you run the barrel and don't, we can, it's a very, you know.
Um, survey continues, talking about what are called accessory dwelling units, like mother-in-law apartments, housing above a garage, or detached hunting house. Um, those are very popular, um, especially with my generation. Um, we don't need a lot of space, because we work so much, we just go home and visit. We, um, so it's, it's very popular, especially for saving cost, because cost of living in this world is expensive. Um, and same thing with short-term rentals. Um, I know Sherman Township re-did their short-term rental policy, and made it very restrictive, very, um, very, uh, limiting on what you can and cannot do, because my uncle himself has properties out there, because he's done the old one. Just, it's, um, they made it very hard to, very hard to do it.
Hard to do.
Yeah. Um, he had two that he used and one for himself, and it was one, one provision in there that, uh, cannot be rented if the property owner is present. Present and using the property. That's ridiculous, but alas, not my, not my down dip. But, um, so it asks, um, asks our constituents what they think, um, about it. I mean, it does mean that the only binding is, um, all season in, otherwise you're headed to another town. Um, which kept you far away, if you can find a spot to do a long weekend or two weeks in, why not? Um, and then it talks about our parks, our publicly owned recreational areas, um, such as our parks, our boat launches. Um, asks what our constituents want us to do with them, that if we should be applying for state and federal grants, local grants, or foundation grants, or just maintain it, or, you know, do some enhancing, add areas, um, such as trails, or, or working with another entity on trails. Um, that was something that we discussed a lot, was recreation. You know, they're, um, White House rebranded itself as, you know, Trail Town USA, the Trail where we see it, because they've got snowmobile trails that go through, they've got the North Country Trail that they can link up to, they have the river, so they, they rebranded, basically, talking all about recreation, so they're kind of
Do they take advantage of, like, um, property that's state-owned or national forests when they did that?
There, I believe, was some.
Okay.
I believe there was some, mostly national forests.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of national, national land contiguous up there. Here is very spotty. Really hard, it's
Very contiguous.
There is very contiguous, ours is very spotty. Um, it's very nice that we have a hundred and eighty acres right off the Little Road of contiguous federal property, but it doesn't link up anywhere else, so it's just a spur, it's not a big, a big trail. Um, and then it talks about ordinance enforcement, um, how certain constituents want us to be, and I think I can figure out pretty much what it's gonna be. Um, no one likes to be told how to do anything, but it's still getting, getting there. Um, it does ask for, um, their nearest major intersection to try and make a, you know, there's a group, there's a really strong, um, concentration of people right here who really, really don't want us to do any zoning enforcement. But there's a really, really strong group of them in this really long stretch here that wants to be really strict on zoning, you know, that, that. So, um, and then it does give, um, information on what we need, um, gives our next, gives the next meetings right in the schedule. Um, it, we, since we don't have our, um, when we discuss our dates for the, um, uh, open houses, public open houses, um, I'm sure those will be added in there, provided, we, you know, depending on when we get this approved and how. Um, Steve, do you think we need, does this need to go to the board for approval, or is this just?
No, I, I don't think so, I think, uh, the ones where, the, one thing I statue that the planning commission is charged with is the preparation, um, and issuance of the master plan. That's actually, it's not a board function, it's planning mission function. Um, I just want to add, I don't know, I did email everyone on this, um, or copied everyone on the email. Um, but I sent a whole bunch of comments, uh, to Jeff about it, um, you know, I can
I sent comments to
Yeah.
I sent comments on my comments to Michael.
Yeah. Um, you know, for the broadband, you know, because that's the federal government's taking area, we don't have a whole lot we need to, you know, we need to do on that. I mean, other than making sure that we aren't being that unnecessarily repetitive on the, on the thing, which we aren't necessarily now. There's an ordinance for those pre-standing broadcast towers, rendered in basic for enhanced use for their, for their small power surrouns. So that they can, so they can get connected, so I don't think that's really gonna be an issue that we need to, don't, don't into it.
Here's, here's what I have added or sent to, uh, to Jeff, is, um, and, and these are the things that I think that we've kind of played around but never directly, that I think we should be more direct about. Um, like, as prior, prior to, or prior to number two, do you support further economic development, job creation in township? That's a big issue. I mean, the reason we got into the marijuana thing was about job creation and economic development. Um, and as follow-ups to that, a two A and two B, if there's no further development or growth, how should services, fire department, first responders, et cetera, be paid for? Because that's the, the current question of that, two B. Um, one of the things that was brought up, um, in the workshop last month, um, was about senior community. Um, if we were to be a senior community, how would we, uh, staff needed services in township positions? Because again, you're depending on volunteers and, and all that.
I did see, um, last, um, yesterday, it was, no, Tuesday, was election day. And Dalton Township voted to renew their existing, um, fire DMS village. And, and, and add an increase for three full-time firefighters in their, in their station for the simple reason of, we're getting busy. We can't rely on our volunteers because of long response times, the fact that people are doing it, working, and possibly can't get away as easily, or are working out of the town, out of the area.
According to
Yeah.
And, and, uh, so that costs money, and, and again, I think people need to weigh in on this. Um, you know, part of number three, perhaps we should drill down on some specifics. Minimum house size, number of residences per parcel, et cetera. I mean, we did drop our, uh, minimum, uh, uh, living space down to two hundred and forty square foot, which makes us kind of unique in the area. Um, we have a ton of homes, that is very attractive to people. We didn't get a whole lot of public input. Are people happy with that or not? You know, might be an interesting thing.
What, what that need to be on the survey itself? I mean, we've got these, these, uh, selections to choose, or we don't need to actually prove very specific in the survey, that comes after we decide what part, what part we want. Your methods are complicated, people aren't gonna understand what you're actually, what's, what's two dollars worth of, I didn't do good at that, I don't know.
Yeah. Um, number ten, um, lakefront issues, and then goes, like you were talking about, Mike, you know, should there be more denser housing development around our lakefront areas, just, is a general question. Um, but along with that, should there be more lake access for the public?
How you do that?
We had, we had, but that was a purchase of property from private landowners too late.
Yeah, I mean, we
That, that would be the way to do that.
Yeah, I mean, we have, uh, there's, there's funding, we're gonna get if you, if, and if you read the recent, um, uh, town, uh, MTA magazine, there's gonna be a bunch of money coming in, uh, coming through the state to the townships, and that could be used for that purpose.
We have access to certain lakes that is impossible to get to the lakefront also.
Yeah.
I mean, township needs to, we can figure out some way to, right, we can find funding for, or whatever, get access developed.
Yeah, or, or even to improve what we have, like, like, uh, project making.
Project, yeah, I think.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I don't know how many people have to go there, there, on the lake, but
There's a few.
There's a lot.
But most of them, you know, you can get on it, though, from that one.
That's, and then you got people who don't even know it's there, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you get to the thing where you go, you're talking about lakes, where you get up like on the flare, the people already on the lake, don't want any more people on the lake. It's already so busy, it is, I mean, I, I know a lot here, and I can't imagine what you hear just now.
New old lake in city, then.
Yeah.
Well, that's another thing I'm concerned, or concerned about, is the housing development around the lake. What's happening with the, uh,
Pollution.
subject around all.
Absolutely. I mean, and I think that needs to go hand in hand, I mean, you're
You're supposed to be able to control that, or not?
No, no, unfortunately not. If you look at, uh, is it okay if I, I scoot over?
Sure.
I didn't, you know. Um, because we, we, we're in kind of a we
It's supposed to be a short, sweet one.
Okay.
I'm working on it. All right, make it shorter, keep it.
Okay, we're not. Adjourn.
I'm probably gonna be, you're all right.
Um, wait, you know, this is, you already are seeing this, with, you know, people are replacing a small house with a huge house. And, and, and when they're doing that, they're also putting in a nice fancy lawn, and, um,
Septic system.
You know, yeah, well, not even the septic, is that they put in that lawn, and now they fertilize that lawn. And this is what happened with Silver Lake.
Yes.
You know, and it's, you know, they've done, um, so that brings up the point. Okay, if we're gonna allow this, and people want this development on the lakes, that's cool. But you're gonna have to have some sort of combined treatment system instead of individual septic.
That's what, um, Robinson, well, the Sherman, the Sherman White Utility Board.
You know, and and one of the ways you could, again, go to kind of tie those two together, with the short-term one, with the lake. Golden Township has a ton of short-term rentals, because of all the houses on the lakes there. And, um, so you can, in short-term rental, you pay fifty dollars a year, permit fee for that, there's a registration. If you, if you're in, you don't have that sticker in your window, you're a D two. But, so people pay their fifty bucks, it's a whole lot, so people pay it. But when you have, let's say, a thousand, that's fifty thousand dollars a year. That's a significant amount of money. So, if you're talking about doing like a combined septic, and you use like USDA rural development funding, you know, they have one percent interest loans and stuff for, for infrastructure, you can have a payment that matches what your revenue is from these short-term rentals. So now it's not really hitting people too hard in the pocket, okay? Hey, guys, I'm sorry, you could pay something, but instead of it costing you like out there where they were acting like jackasses about it, well, now it's gonna cost these people, not close to twenty thousand dollars a year, to solve their problem. If you, I think, one thing that needs to be discussed with folks, if they are interested in going that direction, is, okay, you gotta give up something, you know? It's all wonderful, we all want this good stuff, but there's always a cost, you know?
Yeah, you can go from fifteen hundred square feet to four thousand, double.
Right, yes, something, something
Well, it's like the, there's a
Actually, that's, that's not as bad as the six hundred Actually, that's, that's not as bad as the six hundred squared with the three thousand.
Yeah, like, there's a house right on Lake Drive there that did exactly that. Went from a modest twenty by, twenty by thirty-eight with a little kit, you know, kitchen added on the back. And now it's, I mean, the only part they kept was the upstairs, they jacked it up and built this beautiful house around it. I mean, and I know, I mean, it's right across the street from front of mine, I know they didn't put a new septic, I know they didn't, you know?
It's not, Golden's many, it's a, it's a total disaster there because people put additions and all sorts of stuff. And, and they're right next to each other, and they both share this teeny-bitty septic. You know, so that works really well.
Which is fine when, when you're only there for three weeks a year.
Yeah.
But if someone's gonna be living there, or.
When you start renting out.
When you start renting out.
Yeah, yeah, especially if they're.
They're kind of a car.
Right.
So, okay, sorry. So what, what I'm gonna ask for, um, is take, take your copy.
Yeah.
Mark it up, and then send me, you and or Steve or all of us, you can't really do it in a big thread because of, um, the on air. But if you send me your, send me and Steve your thoughts, we will be sure to.
To get them.
Um, to get them to Jeff and have Jeff send out another. So go through this and. Another copy.
Yep.
Um.
Please, I just can't wait.
Ah, well.
We'll be in a couple weeks or a while.
By the time you get home, you know, so, but I'm.
No, 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 I get crazy now.
Uh, so our next, our next commission meeting pending not having to schedule a session meeting is October fourteenth.
Right, I thought you.
And we would like to have our first, at least our first, um, session with public, um, near the end of September. After Labor Day, after, after, you know, kids are back into the.
And after.
Into the cycle of school and after cleanup day. Because we're gonna have to.
You said October fourteenth?
October fourteenth, because it's a Saturday.
Well. Everybody?
I don't know. October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
April?
The Thursday?
It's, uh, what's wrong with that?
Ooh, that's, that's my thing too.
It's the twelfth, the October twelfth. Okay, there we go. I was on a slate for my own anniversary, that wasn't gonna happen well.
No, probably not.
Um, so October twelfth is our next, um, commission meeting. And we would like to have cleanup day is the ninth.
Ninth of September.
Which is, which is a Saturday.
Yes.
Um, so we would probably schedule it for, um, probably the middle of the, of the week of the eighteenth. Somewhere between the eighteenth and the twenty-third.
Oh.
September.
September.
This one, we probably wanna schedule that, so we can get some data compiled for the October day. Don't wanna give Jeff and Steve too much on this.
Well, that'll be the next October.
So, and the other question is then, do we, I think we talked about doing one public session, like in the evening.
Mm-hmm.
And then one, like on a Saturday.
On a Saturday.
So that we get people who work second shift or third shift, something like that.
Wouldn't we want anything back to you, man? So if we can have those by the twenty-fifth.
Oh, oh.
Of March, so that gives you one, two weeks and a day. Not waiting today, so we.
It'll be sort of.
So that'll be, now I can get, as, as results are coming in, I'll send them off to Jeff, that'll be not bombarded with the whole ones. So we can mock this thing up?
Yeah.
Have what we need. Yeah, if you so desire, you can mock it up, have whatever you want, sheet on the back with your notes and leave it, and leave it in the drop box.
Leave it in the drop box.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Yeah, or scan it, yeah.
Or, yeah. Okay, you're getting way beyond my technical ability to be in the drop box.
I felt that to you.
I'm dropping off the end.
Twenty years, I'm gonna do it back.
So that's that.
Okay, so, did nothing in the room, dates on?
Don't be, be a funny word. Well, I was gonna do that in the commission session. So Steve, what do you have for us this month?
What do I have?
Um. Thanks, that was a good report.
Yes. Everything's good, everything's safe. See, and yet, I don't know what you guys.
Think it can't be done.
Yeah. You know, it's. We, uh, I'm gonna, if we pass them up. Um, yeah, there's three permits last month, we've already had one this month, then, um, a little, a fewer complaints, although we've got a couple recently, um, one of the issues we've run into is some permanent change of light and civil infraction ordinance, and we had an issue with the attorney. I finally got feedback today, this is over a month to get sucked back, but, okay, we're moving forward. Um, big thing is cleanup day.
Yes.
Um, we've got it scheduled for Saturday, uh, September ninth, um, eight AM till your call or one o'clock. General close first, um, dumpsters are ordered, we're gonna do the three forty yards like we did last year. So that it's not, I don't think we're gonna have as much as we usually do in the spring. Of course, you never know, but it'll be what it'll be. Uh, my mail isn't contacted, we're switching the stuff down, and, um.
And we'll have the regular recycling center open that day too, won't we?
Won't we?
Yeah.
Cause that way cardboard recycling must actually.
I remember the, uh, uh, dumpsters this week, over in the way, uh, the signage out for the dumpsters was going on this week. So.
We'll, we'll, we'll have, uh, we have, uh, Tim Smith doing the, uh, announce again. So, um, that's all in pretty good shape. Uh, the other thing I wanna report is, uh, a week from Saturday, the nineteenth, RQNI is having a very nice open house.
I saw the flyer.
Um, for OG two, uh, one seventy-six. Everyone is invited, they will be serving, um, quite a nice menu, um, with refreshments and giving tours.
Next Saturday. Now, this is not what we said, the next to nineteen.
Nineteen.
They just got, they, they, it was on Facebook today.
Yeah.
They just started getting published.
Facebook.
Township, next week?
No.
No.
There was a period in the.
It's very real news, but, uh, um, everyone, I was asked to invite everyone on the planning commission. Uh, personally for Ron, um, that he would like everyone to come, it's going to be from noon to four-thirty. And as I said, I don't know who's catering it, but I'm sure because knowing.
He and Johnny.
And that, all right.
He and Johnny.
Okay.
Are these notes? We've got number violations and here are the dates and all of that, are any of these closed?
Some, yes.
Kind of give like a, 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 somewhere along the lines. Uh, what has been resolved?
Yeah.
And what it was, or, or.
Um, I'm telling you right now, what was resolved was, um, one on one, see, I don't know, on the, yeah, one on one sixty-four, um, one on Lakeview, uh, High Tower Lake, um, one over on two hundred and four. I think that's it, we are pre-ordered for this. Yeah. The, uh, what that is, is we, we're rewriting the, we've changed, we're changing our light ordinance to separate out the content from the light ordinance itself. And changing from misdemeanor to civil infraction. And the idea is that if it's a misdemeanor, you have to have a formal hearing in front of a judge. And we have to have an attorney present.
Right.
Which costs a whole bunch of money. Um, if it's civil infraction, as long as the violator is open to it, we can go have an informal hearing in front of the magistrate. And we don't have to have an attorney present for that. They don't have an attorney, we don't have an attorney, so it'll be just the cell, the violator, and the magistrate. And I found out is that the magistrate can order, one of the things attorneys keep on, they want you to hire, you know? They want, uh, is that, oh, I've been told by several of these attorneys, oh, if, if you go before the magistrate, they can't order compliance. Well, I came to find out, they can. I went to a training in the way, well, how many, it was fantastic, I was more than probably any other train I've been to. And I found out that, yes, the magistrate can say, okay, we're gonna meet again in thirty days, and I want you to get this taken care of. Thirty days later, you have this compliance hearing, if they are not in compliance at that point, the magistrate can either say, hey, okay, I'm gonna give you two more weeks, and you better, you better have a good reason that you didn't do this. Or the magistrate can say, okay, we're not gonna play, township, you can, uh, you can go and clean this up, and it will be a lead against that property. And, and you're done, you know, so you don't, you don't have to have all that expense of an attorney and the time of the trial and all that. So what, the problem being that we couldn't get a responsive attorney for, you know, over a month. So, we got one today on the, uh, civil infraction portion, now I'm waiting on the light portion. The other thing we did with that, Wayne's, the other thing I learned is the court, if you have a hundred dollar fine, the court gets sixty-five dollars and the township gets thirty-five dollars. So we increased the fines. Well, in, in the case of, if, okay, you know, if, if it's just me going to court, okay, fine, you know, no big deal. But if we have an attorney, if we date your request a formal hearing, and I know one person that probably will, that will be going to court, and now we have our attorney, that's five hundred dollars. We're still only gonna get thirty-five percent, but that's better than thirty, that's thirty-five percent, that'd be about a hundred and forty bucks. It's better than thirty-five dollars. You know, so, actually, the hundred and fifty-five. Five nine third five, it's, yeah, one hundred and sixty-five.
Three nine five fifteen, and then another.
Yeah, I got it.
All right, thank you for the math lesson.
Yeah.
Anything else for us? Okay, I'm moving on to commissioner's discussion, let's go ahead and lock in a date for our, actually formally lock in date. So the night is cleanup day, and we're looking at a date between the eighteenth, which is a Monday, and the twenty-third, which is a Saturday. For the evening, um, for the evening session, we will probably do the following. Either the twenty-third we can do for our Saturday, um, midday, or we could do the thirtieth, um. Don't want that to get too late, have a kind of.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have a little bit of time to write, you know, to get, you know, for, for.
So we do not meet in September, the board will meet on the nineteenth, the third Tuesday, the nineteenth. So that night is done. So that's the only day that I know will be, that will be unable to do. And then, do we wanna choose a different venue, or do we wanna just have it here? For a few hours open to the community in and out?
I think yes.
I think we do that here, cause then they can see you, but then we'll have, well, a lot.
We have a new parking lot.
Well, yeah, well, the parking lot deal will be done in August.
The sign should be up.
Yeah.
As soon as John gets the brackets, gets the brackets put on the sign, I'm sure that's up there in there.
Yeah, so they should be, so, yeah, so anytime in that, we should, everything be done, then the people can see it, that's my thing.
Okay.
That works. Have a year to make the CD improvements.
And we have the parking.
Yep.
It looks great.
Yes. So, I don't know, whatever they do.
T-shirts.
I'm not getting into the law over there anymore, that's what I mean.
No.
Right now.
Well, yeah, those t-shirts stuck out a lot, with it, somebody being against it, and we were having a meeting, and swat the right.
So do we wanna do, do we just wanna eat the same formula and do Thursday, the twenty-first? That's gonna be the public meeting?
Yeah.
And I figure what, four to, four to eight?
I think we wanna go.
Wanna go later, earlier?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think I would go six to.
Six to nine?
Six to nine.
Six to nine?
I think maybe six to nine on the twenty-first.
Yes.
Yeah, because this way, you know, people are getting up at five, work at five-thirty.
Yeah, James.
Yeah, they can bring up and, uh, grab the kids, whatever, and, you know.
And then, um, if you leave that day, we'll come, do we wanna, do we have farts, or do we wanna have?
Do pizza.
Mr. Pizza?
All the, the pizza place, and.
Oh, yeah.
And.
No line, I'm not getting one.
Hmm, what?
Mrs. Charlie, do you have a comment? God, Rick, you're telling me Mexican pizza.
Do you have a pizza?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have some dinner pizza.
Man, you can't, I don't fuck with you.
Very, it's a very good. That is true, I weigh in, so people are like, she's making.
All right, so. Okay, so then, so what, and yet, and yet, uh, well, see if we're gonna respond. See if we're gonna respond, you know, but yet, uh, so he has at least an idea, but probably a dozen.
Yeah, easily, you know?
No, I am.
You don't have high enough L P P I, do you?
I don't know, like, I have a.
Oh, why? Oh, no. So, well, we can sort that out.
Yeah, we can.
We have another little, yeah, snack, or it's a very thing.
Yeah, and then, and then, you can send that work.
Yep, and then a little dessert. Yep.
But anyways, but.
Okay, so that's the twenty-first, so we got the twenty-first for the evening.
You know, we wanna do the third year?
I think we do the.
Really? I thought you didn't wanna do that.
Well, that gives, that gives them a week and a couple days.
Yeah.
Just, uh, that way they can compile, they have from the, from the day, the twenty-first, what did they get from the twenty-first?
Oh, the ninth is the first one?
Yeah. No, the twenty-first. Twenty-first is September.
Yeah.
The first one, that's the ninth one. And then the thirty. Thirtieth of September would be the Saturday one.
Okay, that's, all right, okay.
And then if we did that one from, say.
One to, to four?
One to four?
Saturday, nine thirty? One to four.
Okay. Now, if we happen not to be here, it doesn't count, yes, or?
No.
No, all right.
Probably the second one, I remember.
Yes. What's that? Wait, I told you where you're gonna be.
I mean, they, for replays, I'm like, do it early.
If you let me know, it's good. But, um, I guess, okay, can we, can we finish for a change of venue, can y'all go?
It's very difficult.
I don't know.
Like the line, and, and, and.
We might be making more delay over here.
Oh, I.
All right, so we got. So we've got Thursday, September twenty-first, from six PM to nine PM.
Yeah.
Saturday, September thirty, from one PM to four PM, and all help here catered by Angel and Carlos.
Don't yell, make it.
And then we'll sort out, we'll sort everything else out, and we'll get a little bit closer to that. Um, if there's no other discussion, I will go ahead and remind you, October twelfth, not fourteen, will be our next meeting. And I will change your time of the day.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure how that happened. I mean, if you notice, I don't have any appearances this year, because my boys are all multi-merchants, so we don't have. There you go. So they're all Fridays.
Well, we do have a half of a season, we do.
Well, you're, you're coming up early, you know? Does the commission have anything else to discuss? In that case, I'll open up for general public comments, if they want to have public comments that they would like to let me back to board. Going once, going twice, public comments are closed, we have no recommendation for the township board to make this month other than to advise them of the dates of our open houses, which.
Will be on the new sign.
Which will be on the new sign, once I do, once they are out of the program. Um, with that.
Just, just to recap, we go through our, our calendar, we've got, okay? September ninth.
Is cleanup day.
Cleanup day.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Uh, September twenty-first, six to nine will be, um, our first public input session for the master plan. Saturday, September thirtieth, from one to four, will be our second public input workshop. Saturday, September thirtieth, from one to four, will be our second public input workshop for the uh public input for the master plan, and then October twelfth will be our next committee, planning commission meeting.
Hopefully we'll have a lot of daily public interview, so. Question, answer, please. What about, the, so the dumpsters out here aren't gonna open until after we get the park ride done, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So are we gonna have like something for that day, like the day we just opened it, or are we gonna have
We're gonna uh, we're setting up a, yeah, and and we're gonna have people in case there, um, yeah.
Do we have a date yet?
No.
Till we get the park ride done.
We're hoping for September first, but it's probably not gonna happen, so um whenever we get it and close. The rigging is coming into place.
Yeah.
The dumpsters are here for paying for it'll be on, it might be a lot opening in September with the grand opening. But
Well, I'm just saying, why can't we make it like when we do the dumpsters?
Unless Mr. Roosevelt comes to the house.
September ninth, it's a busy night.
I think that's gonna be too busy at the day with everything going on.
We have sixty vehicles in there.
How was, okay, it's the following.
Well, it might not be as busy, well, this is waiting to see what falls in place.
Okay, see how That's the other part from that.
Our signage is being done by um the premium center in Fremont, who just purchased Skate State.
Okay.
Moving everything from downtown out to Skate State, they got some huge contract that they're have to bring it all together, they got pieces here, pieces there, so they, they're moving that out there and that kind of puts them behind y'all a little bit.
For those of us who are a little yonder, where is what is Skate State? It's under by the furniture, Terry, where you at? Okay.
Well, anyway, they just renovated that building because they got a huge contract, often some on that show on TV where they sell contracts to people, there's somebody around the area that they purchased. They got the funding for a big puzzle and the puzzle, and so they've been, they have pieces of this puzzle going together in different, two or three different buildings, so they want that building out there. They're gonna move everything out of downtown and everywhere else out there and put some kind of interior thing in for the
So that, so that's where the RTS and
Yeah.
Runs out, so they're all doing it out there now.
I'm seeing.
The Terry's Furniture, you know, that's gonna be out there, okay.
Yeah, it's a kind of town, like, that is a little, that would be a little, she's on the Fremont board.
Okay. Then in that case, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Thank you.
Motion, I'm Roosevelt supporter of half of the adjournment discussion. Hearing none, all those who may able to say aye, aye, those opposed say aye, meeting adjourned. I had to hear my voice before Robinson did.